It's not my color.
I usually just go with the gloss, I'm younger.
Okay.
You ready? We'll call the meeting order for the Willmar City Council for Monday, December 3rd, 2018. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only addition I have for the agenda is the CERIS update, intergovernmental transfer, and ECPN payment. That'll take a roll call, a resolution with a roll call. Anything else from council adjusting the agenda as presented? City in hearing none, I'll accept the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we are for council's approval, the city council meeting minutes on November 19th, Willmar Municipal Utilities Board minutes of November 26th, application for exempt permit from the Minnesota Ducks Unlimited State Committee, resolution approving Dover Township fire agreement, resolution designating a newly combined polling location, a resolution designating polling places for elections in 2019, application for appointment as a member to the Human Rights Commission of Nate Erickson, reappointment as members of the Human Rights Commission, Shelley Hughesby, and the EDC Operations Board, Art Benson, for council's acceptance, Human Rights Commission minutes of October 16th, Willmar Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of October 16th, Central Community Transit Operation Board minutes of September 25th, the accounts payable report for November 15 through the 28th of 2018, and for council's information, an application for appointment as members of the Planning Commission, Christina Nelson, and Zoning Appeals Board, Dan Riegstead and Sandana Goldman-Ashley. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made in second, approve the consent items as presented. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Fagerly.
I'd like to pull number or letter H.
H.
Yep.
Councilmember Nelson.
I would like to pull E and F for review, please.
Anyone else? City in hearing none, with the exception of E, F, and H, roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Who?
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that passes. Just for the public's information, Christina Nelson was a public member who had a citizen, who had ran for city council, Ward 2, and she's asked to serve on the planning commission. So if you see that name as a familiar name, that's who that name is. So I talked with Christina today, and she's very excited to continue serving the city Wilmer. So she looks forward to getting Wilmer sleeves up and getting her hands dirty. So that'll be great. So councilmember Nelson.
I just wanted to hear an explanation in what we're doing with the newly combined location, and also just to review E and F, so that the public understands what it is that we are needing to do. Okay.
Item number E is a consideration of designating a newly combined polling location. This year, the Willmar Conference Center indicated that they have some availability issues in the future for the elections, as they're getting more and more conferences during the time of elections. So we need to find, needed to find a new polling location for that, for Ward 3 Precinct 1. And it was determined that we could use the Refuge Church. We approached them, and they were in favor of being, becoming a combined polling location for both Ward 3 Precinct 1 and Ward 4 Precinct 1. So going forward, they will be a combined polling place for those two precincts.
So combine mean one polling place? So when you go in, you will go in one location? Or will there be two separate locations within one facility?
No, it's in the same location. Currently, they have an auditorium that's very large, so they can accommodate both places. We'll still have the same number of judges, and we'll just have signage that would indicate, you know, which ward and precinct.
So they're two separate.
To go through their line.
Two separate.
Two separate within the same gymnasium.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I was just wondering, were there any other places in Ward 3 Precinct 1 looked at or considered?
We did look at a few facilities. There aren't very many options in that particular area. And some, you know, we had issues with, like parking availability, getting in and out of, and then we'd probably run into some scheduling options, too. So at this point, this is where we're going. We do have the census coming up in 2020, and according to those, after those results are received in 2021, we will be doing some redistricting. So at that time, we'll see, you know, where all the lines fall, and if there's a different facility, we would look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And then councilmember Nelson, F as well.
Should I make a recommendation on E first before we do F?
I was just gonna do both of them.
They're the same thing, right?
They're both election.
Yep, okay.
Okay, on F was a consideration of designating polling places for elections in 2019. There was a new law that was passed in 2017, which requires each jurisdiction to annually designate their polling places either by ordinance or resolution by the, by December 31st of each year. So this is just a formality that we are going through annually.
All right, I would make a motion to approve E and F as presented.
Second. Motion made in second, a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Councilmember Fagerly on the reappointment of members of the Human Rights Commission and the EDC Operations Board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine is on the Human Rights Commission. You, councilmembers, remember, you received a letter from a person that was on the human rights and then was taken off. And I remember this name was involved somehow, but we weren't ever really told. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend this until we find out what exactly is going on.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Meske.
Well, as a liaison to the Human Rights Commission, I will tell you that Shelley Hughesby is the current chair of the Human Rights Commission and does a good job as the chair of that commission. She was asked by most of the members, if not all of them, to re-up for the position. So I'll tell you that she has the vote of confidence of the commission and does a good job, from my perspective, as a member of the commission.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
I will echo what Commissioner, or Counselor Meske had to say about Chairman Hughesby. She does a nice job. There's, yes, there's further discussion that has to be addressed, I think, on some aspects of activities, but I don't want to go down that road right now.
So there's a motion that's been made and seconded to not approve Shelley Hughesby as a member of the Human Rights Commission. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion fails.
So when is the appropriate time to discuss this, then? Supposed to be transparent. We didn't know anything about it until we received a letter, so I don't know. I guess we aren't that transparent. I'll make a motion to approve or accept these minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the reappointment of members for the Human Rights Commission, Shelley Hughesby, and EDC Operations Board, Art Benson. Discussion. Councilmember Meske.
I know that letter was written in confidence. We've talked about it a little bit. I don't know what the proper avenue is to talk about that beyond where it was left. However, I think there's a difference between that kind of an investigation, if it was to happen, versus the person's competency to run the commission. I see them as separate issues, but I would have the same question that you're asking of when, when is that? I don't know if you would say, based on a letter that's written in confidence and what is going to be done with that, is, is a precursor of whether or not you're doing an adequate job running a commission. So I would agree with Councilmember Fagerly of when, when would we do that? I don't think this is the proper location, but at some point, it's something we may need to have to talk about.
Motion made and seconded to approve the reappointments of Commissioners, Commission Members to the Human Rights Commission, Shelley Hughesby, to the EDC Operations Board, of Art Benson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign?
Epstein.
Aye. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Let's see, six ayes and two nays.
And the, and the motion passes. City Attorney Scott, council was asked, when is the appropriate time to have the conversation in regards to confidential letter that councilmembers received? Could you give some direction as what an appropriate time for that would be?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if the council does wish to discuss that matter, I think the council can ask that it be added to any future agenda. You know, the letter was written to each individual council member, as I understand it, that letter is private data unless either the sender of the letter or any individual who received it wants to make it public. Any individual who received it is free to respond in their personal capacity, but if the council wishes for there to be a response drafted on behalf of the council, obviously, that would require a discussion at a public meeting and a motion and vote.
Is there any direction that any council member would like to give to staff in regards to this item? Councilmember Meske.
So if a council member decides that they want to bring that up, they would then breach the confidentiality of that letter, but they're able to do so because that was written to them?
Yeah, it is admittedly a, a kind of a peculiar statute that classifies that letter. It's classified as private data, but either the person who sent the letter or any one individual that received it has the right to make it public.
Then when the.
To the individual.
And if that conversation were to ensue here, anyone who wished to honor the confidentiality of the letter would then not engage in the conversation?
I guess my view as the city attorney who has to interpret that statute is that letter is private data until someone on the council who received it or the person who sent it affirmatively makes that public.
Okay, I guess for me personally, I would want to see the person who had sent it wish to have that be no longer confidential, but that's just my opinion.
Somebody asked. In the meantime, let's move on.
Are we ready to move forward on the agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Next item we have on the agenda is the open forum. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing that there's none there, I'll open the hearing for truth and taxation. Call in our finance director, Mr. Steve Okens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the city of Willmar is to hold its truth and taxation hearing. All property tax owners in the city of Willmar would have received a notice similar to the one I have here in front of me. On that notice, it, it has the property information that that property is being proposed, property taxes for 2019. The notice contains the property values. It also lists the actual 2018 property tax for that parcel, as well as what is being proposed in 2019 by the three or four taxing jurisdictions. Kandy Y County held their truth and taxation hearing on November 29th. Tonight is the city of Willmar's truth and taxation hearing, and the school, independent school district will hold theirs on December 10th next week. Part of the truth and taxation hearing is to discuss and adopt a final property tax levy, as was proposed by the city council back in September. The second action that you will be asked to take some action on is to adopt a total operating budget and capital budget for the city of Willmar for 2019. The meeting tonight, if the council chooses not to do that, may be continued on December 17th, your next council meeting, but the property tax levy and budget would need to be adopted prior to the end of December 2018. Just to bring a little history of how we got to this point tonight, the city of Willmar, the mayor proposes, per the city charter, a proposed budget to the city council in the month of September. That month of September, preliminary tax levy is due to the county auditor who prepares this notice and sends it to all the property tax owners. That proposed property tax levy can be reduced, but cannot be increased from that point on. And so the mayor, when he did propose his budget and property tax levy to the city council and citizens back in September, also scheduled a number of public meetings that we held at the fire station in, in the month of September. We started with a meeting on the September 11th, where we discussed all the revenues and anticipated revenues that the city would be looking at in its 2019 budget process. We held a second meeting on the 18th of September and discussed all the capital, as well as fixed and flexible charges. And then a third meeting was held on September 25th to summarize what we had discussed and what the mayor had proposed. At those meetings, we had a number of informational items that we were encouraged to present to the public in regards to construction and, and building value increases, which has a direct impact on the property tax rates for the city of Willmar, as well as the other taxing jurisdictions. At the first meeting, we presented to the public that we had at the, through the month of August, had 22, a little over $22 million in new construction. 16 million of that was for taxable property. And that has been historically the trends that we've been experiencing, which even though the, the property tax dollar levy was a 5% projected increase, with that new growth, that does have a direct impact on the tax rate. And so that percentage would not carry through to the rate itself. Other items that we had talked about at, at the hearings to talk about on the, on the budget were some new future projects that we're excited about, that are happening for future tax-based growth. Those being the Industrial Park Warehouse Distribution Center, that's being presently worked on for a large chunk of the industrial park, heavy equipment sales and service facility on the, on the south side of the town, some new, a new credit union, a number of apartment projects, adolescent mental health, and some strip malls that were, were going on. Part of the new growth that we are experiencing is directly attributable to or helps the tax base and tax rates. Some of the history we also talked about at the hearings and public meetings were the state of Minnesota and their discussion on local government aid, as well as property tax levies, as far as levy limits. Levy limits are where the state of Minnesota will, may introduce laws where it would restrict the amount of tax levy that the city of Willmar or any city in, in the state of Minnesota could do. And what they do is they take the combined total of your local government aid, which is funds that come from the state of Minnesota in combination with your tax levy, and restrict that as far as how much you can, you can increase that. It's not driven by your, your growth. It's, it's, it's something that historically, over the last 20 years, has been on, off. It's been on the legislature at the time. Right now, there is no levy limits. And so the, the tax levy that is proposed for this hearing and discussion tonight is roughly a 5% on the dollar amount, which would increase it to 5.2, $5 million, roughly $275,000 increase over the 2018 property tax levy. And so that growth would help, again, defray that. Also discussed at our hearings were some comparative numbers on other regional centers. We compare and get this information from the League of Minnesota Cities, and, and we compare ourselves to 19 regional centers, ranging from Hutchinson, New Ulm, Brainerd, Albert Lee, Ortona, Northfield, Fairbowl, Ferguson Falls. There are 19 regional centers that the League of Minnesota Cities classifies. The discussion that we had and was available to us at that time, there were 10 of those 19 regional centers that also have a local option sales tab available to them. And since the election in November, and the city will be approaching a legislative session in 2019 to be able to add that tool to our toolbox as well. So that should be able to help as far as those projects and be competitive with those other 10 of the 19 regional centers as far as tax-based growth and, and things that can be done to help enhance that. We talked about at the work session, the 2019 overall budget. We talked primarily about the general operating budget. The general operating budget is, is seeing a slight increase over the 2018. And again, those dollars are somewhat restricted and, and are being proposed in combination with the capital improvement program, the waste treatment plant, and all debt service for the city of Willmar. Included, again, in your packets are information that pertains to the two actions that are being requested tonight after public testimony. The first action would be to recommend a property tax levy of $5,250,000. The second action is a resolution prepared adopting the budget of $42,018,899. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak during the truth and taxation hearing? City in hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it to council. Council, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve the, to, a motion to establish the 2019 tax levy at $5,250,000.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the 2019 tax levy for the city of Willmar in the amount of $5,250,000. Discussion. Councilmember Meske.
I was wondering if, Mr. Okens, can you summarize some of the feedback you kind of gained from the hearings and public meetings, some of the feedback that people had on the proposal for levy?
We actually did not receive any direct calls. The public input at the meetings, there were questions and clarification on, on some of the capital projects and capital programs. Some that I can remember were the legacy grant and the timelines that were involved there in the projects on Robins Island. A lot of discussion on the tax-based growth and the projects that I had mentioned in my presentation. Other than that, there was not a lot of questions as far as the different programs or capital programs.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since this is a public hearing and it's truth and taxation, Steve, could you tell us this, this approximately $276,000 increase in the tax levy, is it, is it an increase in people's property taxes? Or you stated earlier that most of that will be taken up by the increased value that is coming?
A large majority of it will be absorbed by the increased tax growth. That's why we tried to inform the public that that, the levels that we had, and again, that was through August that we had those numbers. A lot of things on your notice will drive, depending on, on what you see as a property taxpayer on an increase, valuation of your property for one. If your value went up, that will drive it a little bit. What helps with the tax-based growth is a distribution or redistribution of the tax liability. So the more commercial industrial growth that you experience as a community will shift the amount of burden from property, homeowners to commercial industrial, which is what we are experiencing. I don't know if that answered your question. A good portion of it will be picked up by the new growth.
If a person's home value remains the same, will they have an increase in their property tax?
Again, the, the part of your property tax is.
Due to this.
The part of your property tax is, is made up of the Kandy Y County, the city of Willmar, and the independent school district. Of your, every tax dollar that a property tax owner would pay, 26% or 26 cents out of every dollar is, is, is driven or affected by the city of Willmar. The others from Kandy Y County and the city and the school district are at their hearings. So for the city portion, there should, it would be a slight increase, but not the 5% that I mentioned, that is on the dollar.
No, I understand that. And it's, it's a minor increase, but it is an increase in our, about one quarter of the tax dollar comes to the city. And there would be a slight increase in their property tax, just for the record.
For 2019.
Yes, for 2019. Okay, thank you.
There's some questions. Again, one thing I just want to point out for the council is that we looked at the council priorities. That's one of the things, Steve, that you covered when we had the meetings at the fire station, is we looked at the council priorities and made sure that the council priorities were reflected in the budget that was presented. And so there's about a million dollars increase in street work that will be done in this budget over what was done last year. And so I know a lot of you are getting questions about that. Matter of fact, I had a question on that just today. Is, are we putting any more money in our streets? And so we're putting about a million dollars more in this budget than what we did in the past. So outside of that, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Sorry. Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is a resolution to adopt the 2019 budget at $42,018,899.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the 2019 budget at $42,018,899. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution passes as well. So the 2019 budget for the city of Wilmor has been adopted. So that, that's great news. And we have a lot of great things happening within our community and thank all of you for the work that you put onto it. Also, thanks to Councilmember Nelson for the added work that she put into reviewing the budget and all the added meetings that it takes. Again, those, I would encourage council members to get as involved as you choose to be in, in the budget process. And, you know, those public meetings we had, we only had a few people at those and a number of council members never made any of those three meetings. So, which was a little disturbing because one of my goals was to make the transpa, the budget more transparent and to not have people attend was, was problematic. So with that, we'll go to the city administrator comments. I'm sorry, Caris update. Intergovernmental transfer, ECBN payments. Who's going to handle that? Mr. Oakins?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, earlier at your work session, C E, CFO, Bill Fenske was here from Caris Health. The city and Caris Health has presented amendment to the intergovernmental transfer or the, the payment to the city of Wilmor, the rental lease payment. Since Caris Health became in existence starting January 1, 2018, the numbers that he presented to you would cover 2018 and 2019. Prior to the transfer of Rice Memorial Hospital to Caris Health, we handled this transfer internally for Rice Care Center. And this would continue that because the item was overlooked in the transfer from Rice Memorial Hospital to Caris Health. It's a pass through and Caris Health will reimburse the city for this cost for the state of Minnesota.
So the do, you have the dollar amounts in front of you? Councilmember Nelson has them.
I believe in 2019, it was 9,400.
Yes, 2018 is 3,850. That was the last six months or that he referenced, per month. And next year is 9,400. That includes the pass through for the nursing home.
As CFO Fenske said, there is a slight, a little, slight amount over that amount that the city will retain, but that is based on estimates and, and not material in nature.
I'll make a motion for that approval.
Second. Motion made in second to approve the intergovernmental transfer in ECBN payments from Caris Health to the city of Wilmor. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Bakerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have the city administrator comments. Mr. Holland.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of comments tonight, and I, I just want to follow the mayor and council member Nelson's remarks on the finance staff. And from my point of view, I also want to point out the, the work that Steve Oakins and his staff have done over this last year. This is not something that we put together over the last six months. This is a document that we work on 12 months a year. And I think this year has been very difficult with all the changes and things that have happened. Everything from adopting Eagle Lake Sewer System to our projects, the back and forth and how we're going to finance them and, and the, the, let's say, the, the passing of the, the, the W C E R to our park and rec department. So it's been a very active year. Very, you talk about a living document. That's what we had this year. And, you know, we're going to come out fine. We didn't spend all the money. We, we do have money left over and we're going to do it again next year. So that's one of the things that I'm committed to. Second of all, you know, having Jim up here reminded me that we, we don't say thank you enough to Jim and the wastewater treatment people enough. You know, they're out there every day and, you know, I was out there the other day with our newly elected councilperson, Vicky Davis. And I told her, she's got to take a tour out there because it's one of the cleanest facilities we have in our inventory. They do a fantastic job from cutting the grass to mopping the floors. It's, it's like a scientific lab everywhere you go, not just in, they have a lab too, but everything looks like a lab. And so, I'm always impressed and, you know, Jim's been out there 30-plus years. You know, what a tremendous wealth of knowledge that we have and some of our senior leaders and, and we're great to have him. I'm sorry, he's not here to hear this, but I'll, next time I see him, I will thank him. Also, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I do want to say that, you know, the mayor and the, the council were out at the Robins Island on Saturday night and the snow started right when we hit. And it was very cold for a little while, but, you know, the lights looked terrific. There were people out there and it's going to get bigger and bigger every year. And James Miller, John Snyder, their whole crew have done a fantastic job. I know I'm missing people, but they've, all the volunteers that spent their time out there. And it's going to be a, an annual event for everyone. And I would just last say that next Saturday, Santa will be out there. And the following Saturday, they're going to show the movie Elf. And so, my wife said, how are you going to watch a movie outdoors in the winter? But it's going to happen. They've got some giant movie screens out there and so maybe I'll take my wife out there and she can see how that's done. So anyway, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a, a couple announcements. First off, I'd just like to acknowledge that Councilmember Alvarado and I attended the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Holiday Express that they had in town on Friday. It was a very nice event. We went from here to Litchfield. We were supposed to go to Dassel, but Representative Baker was running late and so that held up the train, which held up a freight train coming out of Minneapolis, which made it so that we couldn't get to Dassel, but we did make it to Litchfield. And it was a very nice event. Councilmember Fernando and I, Alvarado and I, we sat together and had a very good conversation with their legislative people and also Amy with their, she, she works on their public relations items. And so, it was very nice. She was very appreciative. Actually, both were very appreciative of the, and trying to get the Y project put together and stuff. So I just wanted to public acknowledge Councilmember Alvarado for attending that along with myself and that we did represent the council at that event. The other thing is, is that I wanted to talk about Celebrate the Light of the World as well. The Kuzmans, Angie and Chad were honored on Saturday evening. There were a few council members that were there. And they were given a plaque and that plaque hangs on the front of the chapel. So when you go to the chapel and if you look at the front of the chapel, you will see the plaque honoring them for the 10 years that they put into the Celebrate the Light of the World. And for those of you that know Chad Kuzman, he's, his mind is always thinking and always running a million miles an hour. And before we went out, we were in Andreessen Shelter before we went out because it was raining, the wind was, uh, snowing and the wind was blowing. It was cold. And he said, Mr. Mayor, he said, wait till next year. He says, next year it's going to be even better than it is this year. So just that giving spirit that the Kuzmans have of always wanting to give back to their community. So thank you Chad and Angie for the work that you've done for the Celebrated Light of the World and also for handing that off to the city of Wilmor and also to Wilmerfest for the activities there. So there has not been a day that has gone by since the lights were turned on that I haven't received a phone call or contact from the media or somebody talking about the lights and how they just love the lights. Of course, I've had my complaints too. We all get those, we know that. So, but it's a, it's a very nice addition to our community and I certainly look forward to the improvements being made out at Robins Island to make that event even stronger and better than it is currently. So, and then the last thing that I would just like to say is that, you know, we have opportunities within the community. And at the same time that you have opportunities, people can make accusations. And if any of the council members want to make anything public, I have talked to the city attorney and I'm following the city attorney's lead and we will do whatever the council wishes to do. So with that, I'll go to Councilmember Plowman.
Oh, boy. Well, normally I would pass, but I'm feeling in a rather-
Jovial mood?
Jovial mood, yeah. No, we're wrapping up another year. It's cold outside, winter's upon us. We just passed another budget, looking forward into 2019. So it's, all of a sudden, before we know it, the holidays are going to be over and we're going to be into a new year and into a whole new season of projects. Hopefully, we can get a retreat scheduled and we can get refocused, reprioritized, re-energized, and do a great job at, at what we're supposed to do, why we're, why we're placed here, and that is to lead and to be effective leaders. And I guess one thing that was brought to me kind of over in between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas is, you know, city staff goes through a lot of, a lot of hard work with the budgeting and a lot goes on behind the scenes that we hear, you know, we, we know what's going on, but we're not in there doing the day-to-day number crunching and having the conversations. And those tasks are all, all delegated, but we all have to be thankful for it because at the end, it's got to come out to be balanced. It's got to come out to be a, an end result that we can work with that kind of leads us down the way. And, you know, all these things that, that our city operates with, with the municipal utilities and our law enforcement and our fire and safety protection and all those other things. And so, with my kids, I decided, you know, after Thanksgiving, what we're going to do including, including things like that into our prayers at night. Thank you that we have warm houses to sleep in. Thank you that we have warm beds and thank you that we have lights that turn on and thank you that we have good water pressure and all those things that we often forget because it's supposed to be a magical season, but we sometimes get lost in the, just like we get lost in the numbers sometimes, in our own lives, we get lost in the melee of life and we forget to really remember what's most important. And I think some of those things that, that we all take part in, you know, just taking the time to, to remember and realize how many people it takes and how much effort it really takes to pull together and to have a really well-working machine that is not only our city, but our community and to be thankful for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Bakerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that the people out there get out to Robins Island because those lights are beautiful. First time we went was Friday after Thanksgiving with the granddaughter and once wasn't enough. Let's go again, let's go again. So you got to get out there, it's gorgeous.
Councilmember Nelson.
I've been there twice and I'll go back again, but I do encourage people to get out and experience it. Lots to be thankful for. When you were talking about your thanks, I was sent to Target to shop on for, for Thanksgiving night and went through the lines. And as I was standing in line, I reminded myself to be thankful that we have a Target in our community. And so, I think it speaks to the things that we have, to appreciate what we have locally and to take care of ourselves and our community. So, thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
Just a couple of comments. Earlier, you had mentioned that you're disappointed in the number of people that don't show up at the budget hearings, the public ones. And, you know, there's a good reason for that. I talk to a lot of people, as many of us do, most of us do here. And there's a feeling, not just in the city of Wilmor, county, state, and federal government, that people don't make a difference anymore. You show up, you, you, you speak your piece, and guess what? The council does what the council's going to do. And it's usually under somebody's leadership. So somehow, we need to convince the public that showing up makes a difference. I don't know how you do it, I really don't. Hopefully, you guys can next year come up with something to convince the public that you will listen to them. We all listen to the people that get up and ask for money and we usually give it to them, which is a bad sign. It's pretty easy to convince eight people up here to vote yes on a project or a Tiff district or a tax payment, but we need to listen to individuals. That's our constitution, is individual liberty. It isn't group liberty. And these people that come and ask for money are groups. You're not thinking about the taxpayer back there, but somehow, if we could convince them, they make a difference. So think about that next year when I come up and speak to you or somebody else. I will be up here speaking to you. If there's an issue that I'm interested, maybe you can prove to the taxpayers that we do listen to them. It needs to be done. Second comment was, we, we hit a motion earlier that Rick made. I think it was misconstrued about the chair of the Human Rights Commission. I don't believe Rick said to vote against that particular person. I believe he said to delay, if I'm not mistaken, delay that vote until something is done about the situation that the letter brings up. So I don't know if the council wants to redo that vote or not, but it was misconstrued. Thirdly, it is snowing outside, so enjoy it. Thank you.
You know, Councilmember Christensen, you and I haven't always agreed on a lot of things.
But we agree on a lot of things though, too.
But we agree on a lot of things.
And we have a cup of coffee over.
And we have a cup of coffee and we'll have a soda pop and we'll have a bottle of water. And, you know, that's one thing that I'm going to miss when you're not here. You know, you make us look at things differently and you make us look at, have we thought of our constituents? And I think everybody up here thinks of our constituents. But that's one thing I'm going to miss about you not being at the table, your next meeting is your last meeting. And, you know, that's one thing that I'm going to miss about you being up here is that, you know, it's like, okay, and a lot of you don't see this happen, but I'm always either leaning in front of Audrey or behind Audrey to see if Ron has something to say because, you know, I want to make sure, you know, because normally he does talk. And if he wants to speak to an issue, I want to give him that right. And so, I'm going to miss that, Ron. And, you know, I think that you, you've, you've led with your heart, you've led with what convicts you. And, you know, we all need to do that. We all need to sit back and look at that. Now, you know, are we going to move on and are we going to be, continue doing what we're doing? We will, yes, we will. And that's not going to be a problem. I mean, Councilmember-elect Davis is in the audience. She's been attending meetings for most of this past year. I look forward to her leadership, sitting in the chair that you're sitting in now and representing the citizens of Ward 2. So, but I just want to thank you for always, you always bring us back to, you know, did you think about what the constituents think? So thank you for that. Councilmember Schwantes.
Thank you. This is a season of generosity and as people have talked about, Celebrate the Lights. I want to remind folks that the Wilmerfest group is looking for people willing to ring bells at Celebrate the Lights and throughout the community. So if you are interested in doing that, please contact the Salvation Army or Wilmerfest. And with that, I just thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I got a short list. December 7th is Pearl Harbor Day. 76 years ago, Pearl Harbor was attacked. We just lost number 41, World War II vet, President George W. Bush. And we're, we've got a number of vets in our community that served our country during World War II. And I, I just hope you can thank them when you see them. It's very important to remember that day. Fall sports are kicking off, running, swimming and that, dribbling. Keep a, please attend some of those. Celebrate the Light, I think enough has been said there. Great, great, great thing. And when you guys come around that hill up towards Hilltop and you see the blue tree, does it look like it's moving across that hill or is it just me? Notice that. And the last thing, where's the Labor Committee meeting?
City Hall.
City Hall, okay. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Osmus.
I am good.
Councilmember Mesky.
The lights are awesome. I won't keep talking about that. However, we did have a lot of local high school students competing at state level, either individually or as a team. And hopefully, you were able to go. There was something really exciting about standing with the entire city at the football team game at the state. That was a pretty proud moment and it was neat to, everywhere you looked, we had filled the entire side of that stadium was, was, was Cardinal Pride and red. It was a pretty neat experience. I took our whole family and I think we're, we'll never forget that. My kids played in the band, everybody thought it was great. My kids played in the band, everybody thought it was great. I'll also say that, since we're in the jovial mood, this council is full of very good people. They're very passionate and full of conviction. We can debate and disagree, but it's still, we keep a high level of respect, and I appreciate that. And it's been my honor to serve with you and help represent the people of the city of Wilmor. So appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We have a lot to be thankful for, and we heard a lot about that today. And we'd be remiss if we didn't thank our staff for being here and sitting through our meetings and listening to all that we have to say. So thank you all for being here. And also, thank you for sharpening the pencil and assisting the finance director, the city administrator, Councilmember Nelson, and myself in getting to pass budgets. So with that, if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn. So Motion made and seconded, we are adjourned.